At this time, I will call to order the November 11th, 2025 organizational meeting of the School Board of Charlotte County. Here in Charlotte County, we will achieve our vision of success for all through our mission to educate, inspire, and support all students to build stronger communities. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have citizens' comments. Citizen input is vital to improving our school district, and we value your contributions. Citizen comments will be heard at the beginning of the meeting before any agenda items are addressed. While board members and the superintendent typically do not respond during the meeting, your remarks will be carefully reviewed and follow-up will be provided when appropriate. Please include your phone number on your comment card. We ask that all comments be respectful and decorum be maintained. Disruptions such as clapping, yelling, or loud conversations are not permitted. Warnings will be issued for disruptions and continued issues may result in removal. Thank you for helping us improve our schools. Comments are limited to three minutes and speakers must state their name and county for the record. Ms. Carey, Ms. McCarthy, are there any citizen comments regarding the organizational meeting? Seeing none, the first item is the election of the chair. At this time, I will accept nominations for chair. Nominations do not need to be seconded.
I would like to nominate John Leclair as chairman.
Mr. Leclair, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Leclair has been nominated by Ms. Kara Reynolds. Are there any further nominations? Is there a motion and second to close the nomination?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close nominations. Nominations are now closed. Is there any board discussion? Hearing none, at this time, I will call for a vote on the nomination of John Leclair for chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Leclair.
Thank you.
We now have the election of vice chair, and I will accept nominations for vice chair. Nominations do not need to be seconded.
I nominate Wendy Atkinson.
Ms. Atkinson, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Wendy Atkinson has been nominated by Mr. Bob Seeger. Are there any further nominations? Is there a motion and second to close the nominations?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and second to close nominations. Nominations are now closed. Is there any board discussion? Hearing none, at this time, I will call for a vote on the nomination of Wendy Atkinson for vice chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is to establish the dates and times for the 2025-2026 School Board meetings. These dates have been reviewed, and I am recommending approval of the dates and times. Is there a motion to adopt the 2025-2026 School Board meeting dates and times?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the 2025-2026 School Board meeting dates and times. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously, and at this time, I am going to update the name plate. So with any luck, I will do this efficiently, and I will be right back.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
It's in there. It's on there, yeah.
I did practice that, just so everyone knows. Okay, we will now have the annual reorganization meeting of the Charlotte County School Board Leasing Corporation. I will now gladly turn the gavel back to Mr. Chair.
And thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this time, I will recess the November 11th, 2025 organizational School Board meeting in order to hold a meeting of the Charlotte School Board Leasing Corporation to address the reorganization of the Charlotte School Board Leasing Corporation. Ms. Carey, Ms. McCarthy, any citizens wishing to address the board? Thank you. I will accept nominations for chair slash president and vice chair slash vice president.
I nominate John Leclair to be chair of the leasing corporation. Second.
I nominate Wendy Atkinson for vice chair.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to nominate John Leclair as chair slash president and Wendy Atkinson as a vice chair slash vice president of the leasing corporation. Any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion passes. If there is no objection, I will close the leasing corporation meeting and resume the organizational meeting. Action, agenda, Mr. Superintendent.
I do believe, Mr. Chair, I am to read something into the record before we get to that. The bylaws of the Charlotte School Board Leasing Corporation require an annual meeting, which should be the same date as the school board's annual reorganization meeting. At this annual meeting, the new chair and vice chair of the school board will take office as chair slash president and vice chair slash vice president of the leasing corporation. And now on to the next item. The only item on the action agenda is the 2025-2026 School Board Committee Assignments. This is a board's item, so I will defer to the newly appointed chair.
And thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and also thank you for going back to that. I noticed I skipped that. When you went back, I was like, what did I miss? So thank you. The committee assignments were reviewed and updated at the November 11th workshop. We'll need a motion and a second to approve the 2025-26 School Board Committee Assignments.
So moved.
Second.
Any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion carries unanimously. Ms. McKinley, do you have any comments at this time?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
Congratulations to both Mr. Leclair and Ms. Atkinson on your chairmanship and vice chairmanship this year. Looking forward to your continued leadership.
Thank you. Mr. Seeger?
What she said.
And vice chair?
What they said.
Congratulations, Wendy.
Because it is, it is extra work, and we appreciate that you're doing it.
No, I thank you for the opportunity once again to serve as your chair. Mr. Superintendent?
Ditto and congratulations.
All right, very good. With no further business, this organizational meeting is adjourned, and we'll take a few moments just to reset and prepare for the regular meeting. At this time, I will call to order the November 11th, 2025 regular meeting of the School Board of Charlotte County. Here in Charlotte County, we will achieve our vision of success for all through our mission to educate, inspire, and support all students to build stronger communities. Please stand once again and join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you for that. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no additions or corrections to the agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We're gonna go right into reports.
Tonight, we are proud to recognize this year's Everglades Champion School. To share more about this outstanding achievement, please join me in welcoming Ms. Andy Green, our science curriculum and instructional coach, to the podium.
From the Everglades Foundation, and she's gonna come up and share a little bit about what this means, what this recognition means. Good evening, thank you, Andy. The Everglades Foundation is an environmental nonprofit working to protect and restore America's Everglades through science, advocacy, and of course, education. The Everglades Literacy Program empowers the next generation of conservation stewards by investing in teachers to drive cultural change within schools to benefit local and ecological communities. As the vital efforts of Everglades restoration takes center stage, it is important to recognize the key to long-term sustainability rests on the shoulders of our next generation. Tonight, we are here to celebrate a special school here in Charlotte County that has embraced this culture of environmental stewardship on their campus and within their community by becoming an Everglades Champion School for the second year in a row. An Everglades Champion School encourages teachers to participate in Everglades literacy professional development, integrate Everglades literacy into their curriculum, promote interdisciplinary projects and field experiences, and develop a community and culture of environmental stewardship in excellence. This evening, we are proud to recognize Myaca River Elementary as an Everglades Champion School for the 2024-2025 school year.[881.12][881.12][applause] In the words of lead Everglades Champion teacher, Ms. Carrie Dilmore, "We enjoy instilling a love of nature in our students through engaging lessons and creative activities. Due to our fantastic location here in Southwest Florida, our students have the opportunity to visit area beaches, fish the Gulf waters, hike a variety of ecosystems, and understand the importance of preserving our environment by being good stewards of the land. We look forward to continuing to empower your next generation of environmental stewards right here in Charlotte County. Congratulations again, Myaca River Elementary."[918.87][918.87][applause] People are gonna pose for a picture with their banner.
Oops. [laughter] You don't have to. [laughter] Thank you. I had to help, right? [applause] Congratulations. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much.
Ms. Carey, Ms. McCarthy, are there any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. We'll move right into the consent agenda.
We have 11 routine items on the consent agenda, which were reviewed in our individual meetings. I'm recommending approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any board discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion passes. The action agenda, Mr. Superintendent?
This is an agreement between the School Board of Charlotte County and Who We Play For, Inc. to provide heart screenings for students in our district. I'm recommending approval of the heart screening agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Who We Play For, Inc. Is there any board discussion? No, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion passes. Mr. Superintendent, the inspection report, please.
As required by the State Board of Education, our school safety specialist is required to submit a quarterly inspection report. I invite Mr. Joe King to the podium to provide a review of the Charlotte District Quarterly Inspection Report. Mr. King.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Chair, Mr. Pianolo, required to provide the board an overview. However, they came back, re-inspected shortly after, and those... I haven't received that official report. That will come out until January 7th. However, I escorted the Office of Safe Schools Inspector on all four inspections, and I know there were no compliance issues. And since Lemon Bay has filled the house, I will go ahead and give them a big thumbs up and a great job on their inspection this year. So that's it. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. King, and congratulations to...
[noise]
I am recommending approval of the quarterly inspection report.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Charlotte District Quarterly Inspection Report. Any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion passes. Congratulations again, Mr. King, and great job making sure our schools stay safe and making sure that we are in compliance. Thank you again. We have another agreement, Mr. Superintendent?
This is a joint service agreement between the School Board and the Board of County Commissioners for Charlotte County to provide cost-saving commercial driver's license training and testing to its employees. I recommend approval of the inter-local agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for CDL training and state testing. Any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion passes. Mr. Superintendent, the next item is a naming request, please.
District Operations and Lemon Bay High School are requesting board approval to name their athletic training room Charlie's Athletic Training Room in honor of Charlie Russo, recognizing his many years of dedication to the academic success and physical well-being of students. Board, I am recommending approval of the Lemon Bay Training Room dedication.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the athletic training room dedication. Any board discussion? Yes, Mr. Seeger.
I had the privilege of knowing Charlie Russo for all of the time he was at Lemon Bay, and I can honestly tell you, in my experiences, that as a member of the community, as a member of the Lemon Bay family, as a member of the school board, I don't think there's ever been a more loved teacher in Lemon Bay history. Charlie didn't live a long life, but he put more years in his life than just about anybody I know, the way he lived each and every day. He was there when everybody got there. He was there long after everybody left. And I never saw Charlie complain about anything except girls JV soccer. Other than that, he never had an unkind word for anybody. This is an honor that is certainly well-deserved.
Thank you, Mr. Seeger. I'm glad we can bring this to vote. Wait, any more discussion? All right, I'm back now. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion passes. The school calendars, Mr. Superintendent?
These are the 2026-2027 regular and year-round school calendars, and I am recommending approval of the 2026-2027 regular and year-round calendars.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve both calendars. Any board discussion?
We talked about it briefly this morning, but I just want to say a good job to our committee who got this done so early this year. This is amazing that we get this out to our families so they can start planning ahead for next year, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion passes. Our last item, the personal action, Mr. Superintendent?
This is the personnel action, including a job description, and I'm recommending approval of the personnel action and job description.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the personal action and job description. Any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion passes. Our last item, the personal action, Mr. Superintendent?
This is the personnel action, including a job description, and I'm recommending approval of the personnel action and job description.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the personal action and job description. Any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, and the motion passes. All right, thank you. All right, Ms. McKinley, we're back to you for comments.
I still haven't thought of anything worthwhile to say, so I have nothing to say, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKinley, and Ms. Reynolds, we'll start with you.
All right, thank you. Tonight, I just want to take an opportunity to talk about how thankful I am for so many things in this district, so I just wrote it up so I can read it and make sure I mention everybody. So as we move closer to Thanksgiving and a season of gratitude, I want to take a moment to say thank you. First, Happy Veterans Day, and thank you to all of those who have served. I know we have Mr. Leclair and Ms. Carey, who are both veterans up here, so thank you to you both for your service. I'm grateful to our teachers, principals, and support staff who show up every day for kids. You are changing lives. To our bus drivers, custodians, food service teams, and paraprofessionals, your behind-the-scenes work keeps our schools running, and we appreciate you. Thank you to our students for your effort and grit. You remind us each day why this work matters. I'm also grateful to our families. Your support at home strengthens what happens in our classrooms. I'm thankful for our volunteers who read with students, coach, and help at those events. Those big acts make a huge difference. Thank you to our school and district leaders for tackling challenges with calm and clarity. And to my colleagues on this board, I'm grateful for each of you and our continued commitment to putting students first. Wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a nice and relaxing break this year. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Seeger?
Again, what she said.
Got that.
But in addition to that, I'd like to, I'd like to recognize the Lemon Bay marching band tonight. We say it every time, but we're always delighted to have these young people show the talents they have and share it with us. So it was a pleasure to see them, and I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving season.
I think, okay, thank you, Mr. Seeger. Vice Chair Atkinson?
Last weekend, I, was it last week? No, the weekend before, I was at the airshow. And I want to give a huge shout-out to Charlotte Technical College and the president of the airshow, Mrs. Denise Dahl, for partnering together, and they put together a STEM tent. I don't know if anybody went to see that, but it was amazing, and there was a lot of hands-on activities that students, potential new students, and teenagers, and parents all could, could play with some of the cool stuff that was going on there. So I wanted to give them a thank you for that. And congratulations to Jocelyn Carter, who's our risk manager, for earning her Level One Risk Management Certification through the Florida School Board Insurance Trust. So that was, that was great to see her get that. Happy Veterans Day as well to our Kristen and Mr. Leclair. And to my favorite veteran, my son, Luke Atkinson, who graduated from Port Charlotte High School, class of 2012. That's all.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Montrie?
I also wanted to say Happy Veterans Day. Do we have any other veterans in the audience besides Mr. Leclair and Mrs.? Please, please stand up, Mr. King, so you can be recognized also. You guys stand up.
Go Navy!
I want to see everybody stand up. John Leclair, Mrs. Carey, Mr. King. Thank you, guys. Thank you all for your service, and I want to say that our, our district and our county does a tremendous job of recognizing our veterans and appreciating our veterans. I had the pleasure of participating in our Veterans Day Parade on Saturday. We had all of our marching bands there. We had the ROTC units. We had lots of students participating in the Boy Scout, which in case you didn't know is also, it's Boys and Girls now in the Boy Scouts. And it was just great to see all of our students out there showing appreciation and honoring our veterans. I think we do a wonderful job of teaching our students about the value of service to this country. So Happy Veterans Day to you, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montrie. Happy Veterans Day. Thank you to all of our veterans out there, and want to give a special shout-out to Donna Dunneke, who does a wonderful job coordinating all the, coordinating all the veterans activities. All the schools out there, fantastic activities going on in the last week or so, so congratulations to Donna Dunneke and to our schools. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I too would like to begin by thanking our veterans, not only in this room, but also those that are listening or at home or who work for our school system. We have over, around 130 employees that are veterans, and so if you haven't seen our posts today, you can meet some of them virtually. Some of our veterans were highlighted in our Facebook and Instagram posts, so please take a look at that. And you'll also get a chance to see really the wonderful event that took place today, the assembly that took place today at Lemon Bay High School. So that definitely is a post worth looking at. And once again, congratulations and thank you to all of our veterans. Where we talked last month about, we, we celebrate as a team. And last month, I had the privilege to share that we received as a school district, the Punta Gorda Chamber of Commerce Large Business of the Year. And so this month, we're on a roll, and I get the opportunity to share that a few weeks ago, our school system was once again recognized, a collective win, a collective effort. We were recognized by the Economic Development Office for the Business Excellent Award. And so I'm proudly gonna share this, and we'll put, we'll find someplace to put this up here in our, in the boardroom. And we received the award for innovation and workforce development. And when the presentation was being given to us, there were three specific programs that were highlighted, and Lemon Bay's cybersecurity program, the advanced manufacturing program at Port Charlotte High, and the aviation program at Charlotte High School. However, we know that we have dozens of relevant CTE programs all throughout our middle schools and our high schools, and we also know that we have excellent academic programs as well. So I'm gonna throw out a teaser, and I'm gonna invite everyone who can hear me. And those that can't, we're gonna somehow get the word to you that on January 27th at Centennial Park, we will have our Second Annual Magnet Fair Expo. So all of our wonderful academic and CTE and magnet programs will all be in one room, and I invite everyone to come and take a look at, if you're a fifth grade parent, all the way, eighth grade parent, all the way ninth and 10th grade, we're gonna get more information on this, but this is a teaser. It's a wonderful event, and I hope to see you all there. And finally, I'm proud to share our living within our values... And finally, I'm proud to share our Living Within Our Values Award, and Board, this is a good one and is very timely as we celebrate Veterans Day today. This month's awardee was nominated by Donna Dunneke. The teacher she nominated is Heidi Adams, and Ms. Adams works at LA Ainger Middle School. Donna wrote, "I enthusiastically nominate Heidi Adams, ELA teacher at LA Ainger Middle School, for the Living Within Our Values Award. Ms. Adams is an exemplary teacher who integrates civic and character education directly into her ELA curriculum, most notably demonstrating the core values of community, integrity, and empowerment. Her Letters of Appreciation Project for the local mid-October Honor Flight perfectly demonstrates these values in action. Ms. Adams elevated a required state standard on patriotism into a profound act of community service, leading her students to write over 100 personalized letters to local veterans. This initiative forged a tangible link between the classroom and our local heroes, building citizenship through direct engagement. Instead of passive instruction to cover the Veterans Day requirement, Ms. Adams modeled integrity by structuring an authentic writing experience using ELA standards. This ensured her students actively practiced the qualities of citizenship, such as kindness and respect, that are integral to the statute. And the project empowered students to use their literacy skills for real-world civic impact," and I love that real-world connection. "By delivering personalized thank-you notes, students provided a profound morale boost to our local heroes and experienced firsthand the power of their written words. Ms. Adams' commitment to connecting literacy and living citizenship in such a meaningful and value-driven way makes her an ideal recipient of the Living Within Our Values Award." And Ms. Dunneke, I couldn't agree with you more, and I'm looking forward to seeing Ms. Adams tomorrow and giving her one of our Charlotte County Honored Challenge Coins, so I'm looking forward to that, and we'll have a Facebook post shortly thereafter so everybody can follow along and celebrate with us. So, Mr. Chair, that celebrates, that concludes my comments this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So with no further business, this...